I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start a timer for 30 minutes should anyone from the public wish to speak during that time. We're just going to proceed with our agenda, but we will stop and let people speak if they arrive or if...I don't know if anyone's here outside of our people? Okay. And then when that 30 minutes is over, public input is over also. Okay. Do we have a PTO update? No. Okay, moving. All right.
Just a very quick update. The PTO is going to have a movie night on the Lincoln Street School campus on September 29th. I don't have the details as far as what time it starts, but it is something that they've been talking about for about a year now, and there is a vote going on as far as what movie will be watched that they're asking kids to participate in.
Seven o'clock sharp.
Seven o'clock sharp.
Okay.
And we'd also like to thank them for the Welcome Back to School signs, which were in front of both buildings for our teacher meet and greet in the first day of school as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is SAU 16 Administrative Update. Esther Asbell Superintendent.
Hi, everybody. Good to see you all. Hope you had a good summer. We've been busy here in SAU 16. Just a quick update on the facilities as the board, I know, was so generous at the end of the year last year around our playground, et cetera. So kind of an update on things that were done this summer. At Main Street, they did construct an outdoor shade structure, added a wall and door in the Global Skills Room, new cubbies in room 127, replaced a portion of the roof that has been problematic, replaced fence around the playground and field. About half of it's complete. It should be completed now. I think it's completed now. Replaced the carpet with tile in the music room. At Lincoln Street, the new security window for the receptionist was installed. The gym interior doors we talked about, that project was completed. There was a wall and a door added between the cafeteria and the annex, as you can see. Repaired the chimney and installed the stainless steel lining, trimmed the large fee out front and removed dead limbs. Art room cabinets have arrived. They were waiting on plumbing fixtures, and I got this from Rusty the end of August, so I'm not sure if that's completed yet or not, but it's in the works. Room 131, an upgraded bathroom to ADA specifications and added enough additional spaces requested. Removed the wall separating 131 and 131A. Removed all the chips for the upcoming ADA rubberized playground. Replaced or added carpeting by room by stage, library office, and room 122A. At the preschool, they installed new doors in a downstairs room. Got the door pop alarms are scheduled as follows. At Main Street, they'll go in on 10:10, in the preschool on 10:23, and at Lincoln Street on 10:30. I think those are most of the projects I know. I haven't been out to the playground. Has that been poured? Did that get poured yet, or is it still waiting?
They're getting it first.
Okay.
I actually texted Rusty today about it. He's expecting about two weeks, but everything is like ready to go for the new surface.
Great. Yeah, we're excited about that. Any other questions about facilities or security updates from the summer work? Moving on to my goals, they should have been in your packet. These were the goals that I presented version, I think, four to the evaluation committee. They gave feedback and I adapted on their feedback, sent that back out and got the okay with that. We do have another evaluation meeting, the 14th, for that committee to, I think, get an update on where these things are going and kind of how we're going to make this all happen. Many of the things we have put already into play, particularly around communication. The central office administrators are meeting with board members. Those have begun. We have our communications survey for the co-op going out and then a SAU wide communications survey going out in November, so that's in the works. I've started booking appointments with association leadership. I've reached out to some local and state level community partners such as the New Hampshire Racial Equity Group. We're going to partner with them in my role as SAU 16 Superintendent and as NHSIA President on both fronts, so I think that'll be helpful. Seagulls Muncher Health, we have a good relationship and partnership with Jody and that group. They're in our buildings and supporting our students now. That I think that partnership is continues to grow. We have a partnership with the Institutes of Disability at University of New Hampshire through our Renew Program. That's continuing. Kathy Frankkore is our consultant and our connection there. Also setting up some connection community meetings. That'll go out in my newsletter tomorrow that you'll have access to in October. I'm going to do Exeter area. One will be at Lincoln Street and one will be at Julia's at SST. November, looking to hopefully connect with the library in Brentwood and then maybe hit the other libraries. It feels like that's a good venue for the small towns, trying to engage some of the community members that might not normally feel comfortable or want to come to the school, but they may frequent the library, so thinking that might be a good venue there. Our strategic plan, I'll go present our ideas and our quotes on that at the joint board meeting, so that's in works as far as trying to get some quotes. The Vision Summit, which I skipped over in Goal One, we're setting a date for that, probably in November. What that will entail is engaging the community for probably like a four to eight event in the evening, looking at our current graduate vision and then our current DEI vision statement and trying to bring those two together under one umbrella. Certainly, the DEI will stand alone, also continue to do that, but we'd like to bring that equity language into that, our overall vision statement for SAU 16. So that's really the work there. It's not a brand-new vision statement, but it's really trying to get equity language into the one that exists. So the other words, the collaboration, the perseverance, the things that are aligned with competency base, that will remain. It's trying to fit those other things in and what makes sense there. So that'll be like a one-time event. We'll engage the community and get feedback and then hopefully work something out there and then push that out to everybody for final feedback from the community and the schools and kids and all that, and do a little bit more adjusting, I'm sure. So we hope to have that process wrapped up by January, February. And then if we go into strategic planning, we'll have our new vision statement, our revised vision statement to start that work. So we're headed in a good direction there. For Goal Four, you're all getting the growth data tonight, the fall growth data. Everybody's, all the boards will receive those this month and in October in each town and then again mid-year and again end of the year. District boards on the multi-tiered systems, we tie in with administration and see when that's a good time to do that. I'm guessing probably November and then maybe April as things get rolling and then what's the data on how interventions are working, et cetera. I continue to coach all the principals. That's in play. All the other coaches listed and their roles are all in play, so that seems to be going well. For Goal Number Five, again, we're going to do looking at that training for the, all of the staff in October. That was going to happen last year. We got snowed out that implicit bias training and then the whole joint board will also have the implicit bias training. Continue to review that Alma discipline data for looking for trends, and that'll come out probably in another annual report, like you saw this year at the joint board level from Andreas. And then those new protocols, I know we've been using them and working through those. Those seem to be working well and nice checks and balances for some of our students that have experienced unfortunately some bias or discrimination, so that's been a nice guiding document for our administrators. So overall, got some motion and movement on the goals and we'll continue to work towards those and fill out the chart with metrics and documentation the further we get down the line. So any questions on the goals or?
See you Thursday. Right? Is that 14?
Our last, the last piece on this, well, one more. I just want to kind of point out the proclamation. We were really excited that Governor Sununu made Welcome to Schools Month, September 2023, talking about inclusion specifically, and so we just included that in so everyone was aware of that proclamation. And Andreas, either today or tomorrow, has written a follow-up email and a link to this for the community, so everyone should be aware of that language for our state, which is super exciting to us. And then we do have some conversations around an MOU, and MOU is a memorandum of understanding that is with our union, which they're represented here tonight too, so if you have questions, I'm sure that feel free to answer. Heather and I talked, we are going to do this in public, so we're keeping it to position titles, no names. If for any reason you have a desire to know more specifics, we certainly can go into non-public, we just didn't feel it warranted it and we'd rather be as transparent as possible.
I first want to just say how excited I am of all the teachers that are in the room tonight, those that have been with us before and those that are new. We're so grateful to you and so excited that you're here, sharing your great information and stories. So we worked with the, this is actually the paraprofessional association that we have been working with over the last few months to, we actually just determined, or came to the realization, I should say, that there was a missing piece in the recognition part. I made a copy of just that one page in the collective bargaining agreement, so you could see what I was talking about, and it's 1.3. Those are the instructional assistants. As you know, we have three categories of paraprofessionals in our association collective bargaining agreement, and one of those is instructional assistance. It's on a different pay grid, it has different requirements, those kinds of things. These folks are usually people who have to have a specific license, so like a speech path assistant or an occupational therapist assistant, that kind of thing. And so what we recognized was that there, we were missing a component, and I want to thank Abby and Diana for working so closely with me on this, and Tanya too. Sorry. The medical assistant role. So that hadn't been in the collective bargaining agreement. There was a period of time where we did have somebody filling that role, but we do have students now who are required to have the services of a medical assistant in their IAPs, and so we want to make sure we're filling that role, that we're paying what is necessary for that role. And so in working with them, we designed an MOA, a memorandum of agreement that would hold us until we got to the collective bargaining agreement. It would still be in the collective bargaining agreement during negotiations, but we just feel like it's necessary to add that in now. There's no new costs associated with it. These are folks that are currently in that role. We just want to make sure that we align it with a collective bargaining agreement. And I also put the job description that our team worked so hard on as well, so you have that. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Is this something we have to vote on?
So that being said, I would ask for a motion from the board to approve the MOA that's been presented.
So this is just a holding place until the collective bargaining is done and it'll be formally part of?
It is, yes. It is formally a part of the collective bargaining agreement. Certainly, when we go into negotiations, we can have conversations about what's working, what's not. That's not just this position, but it's any position.
Okay, great.
Yep. And it would require signature, Patty, as well.
Okay. So just make a motion to accept the MOA as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOA as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And which do I sign? Does she have the one to sign?
Yes, it should be one right at the back of your.
Yep. Mm-hmm. And I would invite Molly up. We do, I'm just going to give a little precursor to Molly, that she's been doing some amazing amount of work, not only trying to get our budgets rolling for sure with our principals and administrative teams, but also leading point on that conversion. They've been, I think, locked in the Morgan Center for many, many days, getting some training and going through that. It's going along well, but it's a tedious process. So along with that, there are a variety of issues or situations that have arisen from the state around adequacy funding. You may have seen it in the news, where districts got additional adequacy funding. So that's what Molly's speaking to tonight. So if you look at your sheet, and Molly, you can join at any time, but right now, the Exeter School District for additional adequacy will be $231,622. The board, what the board, we're asking the board to decide is there's a couple options. One is you can hold a special meeting, so it's pretty much the same process that we use for our regular budget, except it doesn't go to a ballot, it goes to the people in the room, much like an old town meeting. So you would have a public hearing on how you want to expend that money, and then you would have a follow-up meeting 14 days later or more, with the people in the room would vote on that, yes or no, how the board would like to use that money. That's one option. One of those options to use that money is to, let's, you know, buy a new roof, or that would be probably one-eighth of an eighth of an eighth of a roof, but anyway. Another could be you could put the money into a trust. So for example, we have our Special Education Trust, we have our Maintenance Trust. And then the third option really is to do nothing, which then this money would go to reduce the current tax rate this year. It's a very short timeline to hold those special meetings because most towns are trying to set that tax rate in October to send bills out in November, so it's certainly a tight schedule. It's my recommendation at this point to do nothing, and the reason I say that is because this board was very generous at the end of the year and, as you know, voted to expend quite a large amount of funds at the end of the year towards very worthwhile causes. However, this gives us the opportunity to put some money kind of back towards that line to reduce that current tax rate, and that's why I would recommend that we don't do anything except give it back to the taxpayers, because you did expend a large amount of funds at the end of the year, as well as this is an opportunity where I think we can show a little bit of good faith, that we recognize the board made that decision, all for great reasons. However, there's an opportunity we didn't know would come at us, and now you have that opportunity. So ask, feel free to ask Molly any questions, and sorry, Molly, I kind of dragged on, but if you have anything I missed, let me know.
I think Esther did a great job explaining it. Also, when we built the budget, it was a needs-based budget, and I don't believe we've had any substantial changes from that, so we wouldn't want to hang on to money that we don't necessarily need at this point in time.
And again, just for clarification, that total amount is $231,622.
Thanks.
What's it called?
It's additional adequacy. So every year, we get adequacy from the state to fund education, and then the delta between the adequacy and any other local revenue that we have in our budget is raised with our taxes, and that's how they determine the amount to raise in taxation. So this would reduce the amount they have to raise in taxation by that amount of money.
So the board doesn't have to do anything unless you choose to make a motion to hold a special meeting to expend the money in a specific way, either on something specific or into a trust. If you choose to return it to the taxpayers, you don't have to do anything.
I'm in favor with the recommendation.
I agree.
Me as well.
Great. And so we didn't come with a current year financial, because we typically do that in October, because we're working with the principals and teams to build the encumbrances for the year. However, what I did bring is the DOE 25, and Patty has a school board chair. You'd want to make sure you sign on the line that says "school board chair." One of them, it's, so there's two pages on that DOE. There's the DOE page and the MS-25. One goes to the DOE, one goes to the Department of Revenue. They require two different signature pages for the same document. So just make sure you, all three of you sign both pages, and then Patty, the top one's in the box, and the other one, it specifically calls out the chair. So on that, when we reported to you in June, we had approximately $1.3 million in the unreserved fund balance, and you as a board voted to spend that on some great things at year end. So that's why you see in the board pack, there's an unreserved fund balance of $911,597, and that will go towards your November tax rate. So did anybody have any questions on that? And I also brought the manifest, it seems like a lot, because it's everything we did over the summer. Anyone have any questions?
No, I'm sorry. I'm a little, doing a paper shuffle here.
That's okay.
I don't. I know we're going to have many thorough discussions as we comb through the budget process, so I appreciate it.
Excellent. All right, I'll let you sign them and collect them later.
I did have a quick question going back, not for you, Molly, for Esther. How are we doing with paras this year? Do we have a lot of vacancies? Are we still struggling to get?
Yeah.
We're still?
We can speak to that. I mean, we're doing much better than most other schools. Schools like Dover and Farmington have, are missing up to 16 paras and more, and certainly other schools in our district are struggling to a greater degree than we are. We have at least three positions that are open at Lincoln Street School and I think at least three at Main Street School as well. We've on-boarded some people. Certainly, we have a 90-day probationary period where we make sure that this is a good fit, and we spend some time, you know, seeing how people are doing in terms of training. We do have some, you know, really specialized positions for individuals to fill, but we're always taking applications, so please, we would love to hear from anybody who's looking for some great work to do here.
So even with the onboarding, you still have three vacancies?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it for the SAU, unless you have any other questions?
Nope. And then we need to move on to approve meeting minutes from June 3, 2023, public meeting minutes and non-public meeting minutes. I looked through them briefly and I didn't see any changes that stood out to me.
Yeah, nor did I.
All right.
Do you want a minute?
No, I'm good.
Make a motion to accept, approve the meeting minutes for June 13, 2023, both public and non-public.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Now it's the Ryan and Tanya Show.
Beth is going to use the screen.
Okay, Beth?
Yes, we will, but before we do that, I did want to introduce Ms. Adams. She wanted to use the half hour that we have for public speak.
Oh, sure. Hi. Yeah. Great.
I feel I've destroyed my credibility by thinking the meeting started at six. So I'm here to talk about the buses and our experience with the buses. I have three kids, one's a baby, the other two, one's at Main Street, one's at Lincoln Street. So last year, we had, you know, a bus shortage of drivers, we had some changes to their routes. There were inevitably days when the buses were running really late, there were some, there were some problems with communication from the schools, finding out in a timely fashion that the buses were late, which ones were late, when to expect them, et cetera. This year, you know, we had one week of school and then immediately we're told all the routes are being changed. It is my understanding that that happened because the bus company gave us Massachusetts drivers for one week, even though they knew those drivers were going to be in use in Massachusetts for Massachusetts start of school the following week. I can't imagine why they would have done that, because why would you build a whole schedule around the availability of drivers that was going to only exist for four days of school? But it seems to have been what they've done. The result for my personal family has been that the kids are, we're about a mile and a half from the school, the kids are, it's taken about an hour for them to get home now because they're doing this big loop and they're last, and, I mean, that sucks for our family. But the larger point is that I just am not feeling a lot of confidence in how the busing has been going over the last few years. So I had a couple of points to bring up. One is, when we call the school, wondering where the bus is. We are told to call the bus company. Now, we don't have a relationship with the bus company, we have a relationship with the school. The school or the district has entered into the relationship and the contract with the bus company. So if that is literally the only way for us to find out where the kids are, I guess that's okay, but what I'm hoping for is the school to take a little more responsibility for, you know, if my kids are taking the bus, as far as I'm concerned, it's the school's responsibility for those kids until they are dropped off at their bus stop. So to call and we're waiting for 45 minutes and be told like, I don't know, call the bus company. Call the bus company, they page the driver. It seems, it doesn't instill confidence, so I'm hoping we can work on the communication aspect of it. In terms of the bus company, I would love an explanation from them as to why we did this entire reshuffle with the Massachusetts drivers after one week of school. You know, we wait for that bus route and then we make our work schedules around that and everything, and to have it all change for what seems, at least from the explanation I've been given, a very easy problem to anticipate, I'd love an explanation for that. It's my understanding the bus company is having a hard time hiring drivers. I'd love to know what kind of pay they're offering. Is it competitive pay? Are there any perks that they can throw in? Is this something we can help with as a district? We shouldn't be having elementary school kids on the bus for an hour who are only in the town of Exeter. I mean, I don't want to name names, but one of my kids is like sprinting into the house because it's a long day followed by a long bus ride. So I would love to know what our bus company options are. Is this the only company we can use? Is there any kind of competition? Is there any kind of a way we can apply pressure on them or get information from them? My second question is, you know, I know that there is technology that exists to track the buses, so it's like a GPS program that's on all the buses. I don't know if that's something that schools license or a bus company's license, but in theory, if the school had that, when we did have a problem with a delay, we could call and someone in the school administration would have right on the screen, oh, bus 16, there it is, it's just turning out of Lincoln Street now. It would take no extra effort, it would be a question of money. I don't know how much. I don't know, again, if that's a school question or a bus company question, and I don't know, you know, what kind of budget allowances would have to be made. So what I'm wondering is, who can I follow up with about this and what can I, as a parent, do to make sure that we see how we can improve the situation with the buses?
So I can answer a couple of questions that might help. And Molly, you're going to, Molly is in charge of transportation with our transportation director, so she can speak to some of the contract issues you have, because she negotiates that contract. To my knowledge, the drivers weren't from Massachusetts, they were from Dover, four drivers. The reason they started with that is because we had about eight drivers, what they, as we call, in the queue, meaning at the Department of Transportation, they have to go through a pretty, obviously thorough background check. We don't control that timeline, however, we were very hopeful, as the transportation company was, that in a week's time, we would get at least half of those people through that queue, so we wouldn't have to change bus routes. That did not come to fruition, probably because DOT has, I'm imagining, a lot of people in the queue. So that's why they made that decision to start with four, because they were anticipating they were going to get four, maybe up to even eight more additional drivers that were in the queue. Sometimes we're in the queue, they also get kicked out of the queue because something flags.
Sure.
Which also may have happened. We don't necessarily get that information, we just only get them that they're cleared. So that's part of the thinking for the additional loaned buses that first week. Didn't work out to our benefit, obviously. In regards to the software, we do have software that we did purchase for our transportation director that has that capability. It is in the process of being uploaded and trained, so it just did not come in in time for us. Our hope was we would use it this summer. It didn't come in for whatever reason on the other side, but that's in process. So we will have that GPS ability, we just are trying to get that as fast as we can. I would ask Molly to kind of speak to the contract to answer your questions about, is it the only bus company, what kind of perks? I do know that I talked to the bus company and they are out there literally beating the bushes. I mean, they went to the UFO festival trying to rouse up drivers, they went to the Apple Fest, so they're trying to be as creative as possible, trying to get drivers. I just know it's not only a statewide issue, but also at least a New England issue, if not United States issue. Let's knock on wood that we don't have a strike like Connecticut, because that would be a lot more difficult, so please.
But then we wouldn't need the GPS, at least.
We wouldn't, we would just need parents driving all their kids.
Yeah.
So Molly, can you speak to the contract a bit?
So the contract is a three-plus-two contract, which means we're locked in for three years plus two additional years. So when I negotiated it, I did pull the parent card that I waited in line at Kensington for a long time to bring down that rate for us. So we had negotiated, I think it was 2.85 the first year, 2.9 the second year, 2.95 the third year, 3030.
That's the percentage of increase?
Correct. Correct. Which the last time we went out to bid, it's my understanding that it was over a 9% increase. So we felt very confident that we did a really good job negotiating that. I think the timing really worked to our advantage when we did that. In comparison to other districts, we do have a very good deal.
What year are we?
I believe we're in the second of the two years right now.
I think so too.
Sorry, second of the three years right now.
And, and is, in regards to what benefits they get, et cetera, I'm, that's, they're a separate entity from us, so I'm not familiar with that. I don't know if you are at all.
I don't know the benefits they get. I do know they have a unique pay structure where every driver makes the same amount regardless of your years of service. But they are a for-profit company. So even during COVID, we, we, we knew, we wanted to recognize that those drivers drive for our, our children. And so we kind of backed into how much they would get paid and said, we will pay this so you provide it to them. But we can't control what they pay their people. So even if we were to increase our costs, we don't have any control that they're actually going to go to the people driving their children. Because it is a for-profit company and they were sold, I believe, last year.
And Molly, another question I heard you ask was, is it the only bus company?
It's not the only bus company, but all companies are having the same problem. And when we go out to bid, we do risk, the last time it was over a 9% increase.
Molly, can you explain a little bit what happened last week when they sent out the email and they changed all the routes and everyone got a lot more stops? I mean, we're experiencing it as well in our household, so.
I don't know. I don't know if you know more about it than I do.
I can speak a little bit to it. So what happens when we're down, we were down four drivers, then all of those students had to be redistributed and all the routes redone, which led to your frustration as well as making after-school plans, et cetera, et cetera. What I can say on our end, what we're doing particularly at the middle school, is working with the Transportation Director, local community programs, as well as the administration to load those middle school buses with students on the correct routes. So some buses don't get overloaded, which then slow down the routes, which then in turn, slow down the elementary routes and the times at the elementary end because they're the same buses. So we're, we are doing it a little slowly and not rolling it out immediately because we're just looking at any domino effect. For example, there's, there's a stop at one of our local centers, let's say, for example. We would not want to cut that stop out because that's after-school care for a lot of parents. So I, the flip of that is, there's a stop at Jerry's Variety. There's not an after-school program at Jerry's Variety Store. So also having middle school kids ride the bus they're supposed to ride. So some buses don't get overloaded, which then in turn causes problems. The bus has to pull over because it's chaotic and again slows down the bus route. So that is in the works. We're just taking, we're trying to do due diligence before we make another rules change. This isn't about route change, but it is about rules change, middle school parents having to use the pickup patrol system like they do at the elementary school. So if a student is going to go over to, if I'm going to go to Molly's and stay over for the night and it's Friday, I need, my parent has to go through pickup patrol, I just can't hop on the bus. Currently at the middle school, kids can get on any bus they want, which also then leads to some more chaos and other problems. So we are on that and hopefully, our hope is that that will speed up the middle school route, which will in turn make this route at least get here quicker, earlier. But again, that's probably not going to all be in place till the end of September because we are making some phone calls. You know, there are programs maybe at the library. We just don't want to make a decision and have someone be impacted that we're not aware of. So we're fully aware that the buses are not optimal, as, as is Molly and our Transportation Director Trish Daly and Sandy at First Student. So we're all working together. You know, our best hope is they get more drivers. So if anyone has any ideas how to recruit and, and support that, it's, you know, it's not an easy job. You know, I think the elementary, when you're an elementary parent, those routes are manageable. Imagine 40 middle schoolers on a bus. It's, you know, even when I have to ride them, I'm kind of like, I'll do the elementary route, thanks. So it's not an easy job for people. It can have a lot of benefits though, because it does have great hours. If you have small children, I know for a student has a provision where if you have a child, they can ride on the bus if they're over a certain age.
I think you have to be over one.
So you can, you know, you don't have to get your own childcare if you're driving a route. So they try to do some perks that way, I'm aware of. But if you wanted to know specifics, you would have to call for a student.
This is all like really great information to have and I would just say, I would love to get it. Like I think if, if the school is going to change the routes after a week, I completely understand why. It would just be like great to have that information come out to parents because this is another example, and I've had this come up many times, which is like, obviously you guys already know about this and have had 50 meetings about it and it's not, I'm not saying anything no one's thought of, obviously. It's really just a piece of like, as a parent, getting the information. We have this technology, we're onboarding it now and we are aware, we were optimistic about the drivers clearing, but the process is backed up. Even just that, it's like, as a parent, it feels very reassuring of like, the problem is identified and the steps are in place.
Yep. I think, I think that that's great feedback. I think the timing of our communication was too short, absolutely. And, and that is nothing on the schools. They didn't know either. Frankly, we didn't know because I thought we were going to have the right amount of buses until Monday morning and they were rolling. That's not an excuse, it's just the reality of working with an outside sometimes, right? Company, they're trying to do their side and they forget sometimes to always communicate with us, which then in turn pushes our communication out late. And that being said, I do have a meeting scheduled with Sandy about that. That's one of the things on the agenda is how do we get that communication sooner, better, faster, so I can get it to parents, so you don't get angry phone calls. I don't get angry phone calls. And not that it's going to be optimal, but at least if people are aware and the rationale of why, that at least helps people understand. So I hear your frustration.
Well, the delays are part of life. The worry, where's the kid? Does anyone know where the kid is? That's the part that I think we could probably, but I would also like to say, Ms. Michelle, our bus driver is great. We have no complaints about her. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. I appreciate it.
Can I ask that one more thing about the buses? Which is, one of the things I think that was, I know this board was interested in was during COVID, there were some negotiations about getting some money back because we had committed to a certain amount, but obviously they weren't spending the gas and weren't doing the runs and those sort of things. At the same time, we also wanted to keep a relationship with the bus company because if we, we could have just said, nope, you didn't perform and we're just gonna, we're not going to pay, we're going to pay you zero dollars. Probably would have sued us, but we could have done that. But we didn't because we wanted to make sure that we had a company. And actually, even though there are some, a lot of hiccups, as you've pointed out with this year, we do have a, a pretty good relationship with a company that's trying to provide drivers for us at least. And that is not, from what I understand in talking to some of my colleagues at other districts, that is a position that they're in. They're really just don't even have, some of them don't even have companies that they can get to work with. That's, that's not to say we can't improve, but I was happy about the way that that went during COVID because I think we are trying to think long-term about this too.
Welcome, Patrick.
Thanks. I thought we were starting at six for some reason.
Okay. So now we're going to go on to the principal reports. Whoever would like to start first.
Thanks, Katie.
I think they're gonna use the screen. Right, right? It might want to. Okay.
All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about our iReady data from last year. We're going to take a look at where we started at the beginning of the year and then we'll take a look at where we ended the year. But first, just a quick little overview. Here's a, a triangle where all of our students should fall. And a reminder that our iReady data that we're going to look at is based on end-of-year skills, so keeping that in mind. The bottom of the triangle here addresses our Tier One, which is what all students get. That's the green, 80 to 90% of our students with a good, solid Tier One core instruction in place. 80 to 90% of our students are successful in what we provide for all those students. Our Tier Two, as you move up the triangle, that's the yellow color. That's, should be about 5 to 15% of the, our student population that receives some sort of Tier Two intervention. Small group, targeted, skill work based on very specific skills to help fill some gaps. And that's in addition to those students getting Tier One and Tier Two support. And then we move up to the very top of the triangle and that's our Tier Three. And so those students, that's a 1 to 5% about of our population that should, they get the Tier One, they get Tier Two, and they get an additional Tier Three, really intensive. And that's when we start looking at like specific programs and real specific profiles of students that need some really intensive support. And within this triangle, we use all of our resources. We use all of our classroom teachers, our unified arts teachers, which are considered our specialists, our interventionists, our special educators, and we use all of our supports in place to run targeted small groups at both the Tier Two level and the Tier Three level. And many of our staff, they receive training in research-based programs to help support and provide targeted skill groups at each of the tiered levels. So this is a snapshot of, at Main Street, of our whole school reading data. And this is our first and second grades because our kindergarten students do not take the iReady in reading. And so the bottom line there shows what our beginning of the year data looks like. And that green shaded area with the lines through it is, they're mid or above at the grade level. Are the green shaded area is just early on grade level. The yellow area, which appears, you know, at the beginning of the year, was our largest population of students, which is one grade below level. And then it goes on to look at the red, which are students two grades, two grades or more below grade level. So that's where we started last year for our students in regards to reading. And then where we ended the year is that thicker top line where we shifted a number of kids, particularly our kids that were early or on grade level or above grade level. We had much more student population that fit in those areas. Now, the other thing we have to consider is this is, the iReady is a one data point. So, and it is a diagnostic assessment that the students take three times a year, beginning, middle, and end of year. And it is also one data point. So we're lucky enough that within our schools, we look at multiple data points in order to look at progress for students and skills. Yep. So we had, so we would need to, so it would be, let's see if I can see that. You just need to add the students. So we had. We're looking at 235, about 238 students, and that's first and second grade. 244 students out of 376 students took the diagnostic. That's because it's only first and second grade. Our kindergarten students don't, do not take it. And then we broke it down by grade level. So the top one is first grade. And the top data point, or the, the bottom of the two for first grade looks at beginning of year and then the, and then the top for each grade level is the end of year. So where we began and then where we ended. And remember, the iReady is based on end-of-year goals. And this slide shows our math results based on our iReady diagnostic. The bottom level again is, the bottom line is the beginning-of-year diagnostic. Where we had about 70% of our students scoring one grade level below or more. And then the top line is our end-of-year diagnostic where we are looking at 21%. And you'll also notice math includes kindergarten. So kindergarten does do our iReady, take our math iReady diagnostic, but in reading, they do not. We have other measures that we use for kindergarten. And then this breaks it down again by grade level. So for each grade level, the bottom bar shows the beginning-of-year data and the one above it shows us where they ended the year as far as their diagnostic. So overall, I mean, we've seen a lot of great growth and a lot of great progress from beginning of year till the end of year this year, or excuse me, last year. And we also have seen some opportunities and some room for growth. In particular, our students who fall in that yellow shaded area, a year or more below grade level, that's really going to be one of our target populations this year to look to see what can we do to help provide some more opportunities for skill development and really strong targeted interventions. Any questions?
I have a question. So I have a couple of questions. So one is, I'm not quite sure where the, you had that initial slide that said 80% of the kids fall sort of in the green Tier One and then you had 15, is that, did I have that right? 80 to 90% should be in Tier One, and 15, five to 15, I see it there. It looks like our numbers, if you combine, if, if it's the same, if you can compare that to the yellows and the reds on there, that would be somewhere between, you know, say up to 20% would be the red and the yellow. And particularly in reading, ours are like at 27%, you know, edging towards 30. And if you take out kindergarten in the math, because kindergarten is really low, it's looks like that's like 8% and you can't get many grade levels below because you're in kindergarten. So it sort of takes that out of that picture. So, you know, you factor that out, those are also kind of in the 25 to 27%. So I don't, you know, I don't know if you can say more about that. One of the things that's hard to see is sort of where we are, you know, this year compared to last year. I'm not talking about the gains over the year, but sort of how the class before did, you know, in the percentages. Is, is it sort of fixed that there's, that they're ending up at the end of the year around 25, 27%? Is that number trending down at all? Are we, are we seeing anything?
So I can speak to that, yeah, because we actually, some of the data that we do collect actually looks at the cohort over time.
Yeah.
From K to one to two. And we, and we actually look at that data in our, in some of our, our groups and discussions at school. So what I have seen last year is that because we were able to provide some really specific targeted professional development on some areas like the science of reading and things like that and learning about where can we provide that targeted intervention, is that we are seeing, seeing our numbers of students receiving Tier Two and even Tier Three decrease over time. So there is a slight decrease and that's why for this year, right, we want to continue to make sure to monitor that we're targeting the right skills, we're using the right intervention. that we're targeting the right skills, we're using the right interventions, and making sure that we're progress monitoring so that when kids are making gains, that they're, they're released from intervention. And then when they need intervention, we're providing that intervention. So we've developed some nice systems to be able to look at data over time and help to make some of those decisions.
One of the things I don't really understand is even where these numbers come from on this slide. Not the other ones, because I get that, that's connected to I-Ready. But who, or what is it, or who is it that establishes that 80% to 90% of your kids should be in that level? Particularly our kindergarteners that we haven't necessarily had any intervention with. And depending on the makeup of your population and their educational backgrounds and variety of factors, we don't determine what that is. They just come to us however they are, and we just try to work with them.
Right, so this is, this is like research-based information based on multiple studies, multiple research. And what it says is, our Tier One instruction, with a good, solid Tier One instruction, 80% to 90% of our students are going to make those academic gains that we would hope for. When that does not happen, we take a look to see, we need to provide some Tier Two intervention. That's small group provided by classroom teacher, an interventionist, targeted and specific skills, supposed to be short-term, right? When kids gain those skills, then they should be released from intervention. When they're, and then when we see that there are some kids back in Tier One, and they're, they're not quite gaining those skills, then we're going to add some small targeted group work for them, too. And, and the idea is also that those students getting Tier Two and Tier Three, we're ensuring that they're getting their, that they're continuing to get their Tier One core instruction while they're getting Tier Two and Tier Three. Any other questions? Thanks, Ryan, you're up.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off by just letting you know that we're going to look at two different data points for Lincoln Street School. We're going to start off with the I-Ready, very similar to Main Street School for both reading and math. And then the second part of the data presentation is going to focus on the New Hampshire SAS, the State Assessment, that starts in grade three for three, four, and five. And fifth grade also includes science. So with that being said, here is our whole school reading data from last year. Again, the kind of the faded-out bottom line is the beginning-of-year, and then the end-of-year data is up top. You can see some pretty impressive growth. Specifically, what I'd like to point out is we did the quick math here. So in the fall, we had 80 students, when you add up the numbers, that were, excuse me, in the red. And that reduced down to 33 students in the spring. We also went from 220 students in the green to 307. So, I mean, it's, it's nice to look at the colors, but as far as like the real numbers with students, that was, that was the reduction of students that were two or more grade levels below, as well as students that were on grade level or above. When we looked in and kind of dived into the data a little bit specifically with I-Ready, there's, I guess I'll kind of stop myself from jumping ahead, but just looking at the I-Ready data. The reading intervention block that we have is part of our master schedule, where we have four interventionists that are right back there. And they're actually very happy that they have a little bit more soundproof from the cafeteria this year when they deliver their instruction. But that, those four interventionists help out quite a bit with a lot of our Tier Two needs. We also use Acadiance as a progress monitoring tool throughout the year, where students at the Tier Two level, so students that have been identified and pulled into small groups every six weeks, we do some progress monitoring and use that data to, you know, juggle groups around, either bring a student in or say, okay, we've closed the gaps with this student. So we push them back into the classroom. And then I also wanted to just shout out that, you know, I think some of the growth, or attribute some of the growth that we see on the screen to, again, as Beth said, the science of reading, professional development that really does target foundational reading skills for students, but we're giving it to all of our teachers. So our teachers are really able to kind of hit on those foundational reading skills at the Tier One level, which, again, we're trying to be able to, you know, hit all students and close those gaps before we have to, you know, pull out for a Tier Two. Again, looking by grades, you can kind of see just as, just as you saw from Main Street, you have the beginning-of-year, or, you know, is the line right below. So in third grade, you see end-of-year, followed by beginning-of-year. And I'll kind of let you look at that for a moment. And then I'm actually going to invite Julie Lambert to come up and discuss our I-Ready math scores. Julie Lambert's our curriculum coordinator at Lincoln Street, and she can speak to the math growth that you're about to see.
So thanks for having me. Ryan asked if I would talk about our math scores, and I'm very happy to do so. I would like to point out that we went from, if you look at the bottom line, the beginning-of-year data, we went from 92 students in the red last September to 25. So we were feeling really excited about that, happy for our students. We also went from 107 in the green to 290. So a lot of growth happened at that upper end of the continuum. As far as the yellow goes, we start, yellow, remember, is one grade level below. We started with 205 and moved that to 89. So one might ask, why? How were we able to achieve this? One of, we are always, always hypothesizing and looking for reasons and explanations to support our growth or our areas of concern. So last year, for the first time, we implemented a Math Win block, where all students at the grade level left their classes. They shuffled classrooms for a 30-minute What-I-Need block that was very skill-specific and very targeted. We were able to provide some really significant enrichment opportunities for our students who were ready for one and two grade levels beyond their, their current grade level, to really challenge them. And we were able to really support our students who were significantly below grade level with a very small, very targeted group. All teachers were involved in the Math Win group. Our math teacher, Zoe Polycronopoulos, that was a new position last year. She was really involved. I was involved, everyone was involved. It was all hands on deck during Math Win. And the students, not only did it show up in our scores, but the students really enjoyed the Math Win. We had, we saw confident, happy students who sometimes feel, feel a little bit defeated by math. They have a hard time with math. And they were in this nice, small group where they could really, their confidence was built. So we're really proud of the work we did in Math Win. It was also really and truly the second full year of consistent 185 days of math instruction with the I-Ready program as it's meant to be implemented. We launched that program in conjunction with COVID, and it took some time to get back to where we needed to be. But we're really seeing the benefits of the consistent instruction, 90 minutes of math a day paying off. And I also want to mention that all of our staff were participating in some additional math training with our coach from Math Empowered. And they were learning best practice strategies and, and new strategies through the coaching efforts. So that's just one of the things I wanted to point out. And here, we break it down by grade level. So again, three, four, five, from top to bottom. The, you know, the, the colors speak for themselves. But when I look, I, I always look first at the red. I'm looking to see, were we able to move our, our students who are challenged the most? And I feel like I can say, yes, we did. And I also then look at the green, and that really jumps out at me. So that's our math data. You're going to launch into that?
Yeah, I'll launch, thanks.
All right, now we switch over to New Hampshire SAS. You can see there that if you add the blue and the green columns, that the school percentage of proficient or above was 63%. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see that the breakdown by grade level, where we had 63% proficient or above in grade three, followed by 57 in grade four, and 72% in grade five. I don't have it included on the slide, but historically, if you look at the historical data of where Lincoln Street School was for the last couple of years, this is trending upwards at 63% for Lincoln Street School. The last two years, which would be the last two years that we had data post-pandemic, were 59% and 57% respectively. So we are trending back up. When we look at the grade level numbers, particularly 63% in third and 57% in fourth, our third and fourth grade students, it's just kind of, it's interesting and important to think about, where were we when they started their educational journey? So our third and fourth grade students were in kindergarten, first grade in the spring of 2020. So as a result, you know, this is something that Julie and I, and Deanna, and Diana, we've had some conversations about, you know, we've had these hypotheses about, you know, what we're going, what were going to be the impacts of the disruptions that we had, you know, around 2020, 2021 specifically. So these students had interruptions in instruction and foundational reading skills when you think about kindergarten, first grade during this time. This is something, I'm sorry, repeating myself. So this is one of the big reasons why we're really pouring a lot of resources and a lot of our time and energy into training staff with the science of reading, particularly the lower end of the rope or the foundational reading skills, to help fill gaps at all tiers. That's why we want our Tier One teachers to have this training and understanding, because right now, our third and fourth graders, or I guess at this point, fourth and fifth graders, we do still see some gaps that we're trying to close at, at all, at all the tiers, at all the levels. That brings us to mathematics next. If you, again, if you add the two numbers there in the blue and the green, it brings us to 62%. And then you can see the grade breakdowns on the right-hand side, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a moment. But grade three at 74% proficient or above, grade four at 60%, grade five at 51%. Historically, again, we're trending in the right direction at 62% in math. The last couple of years post-pandemic, we were at 59% and 46% as a school. So we are making gains. And again, this was an interesting conversation when you think about where were these students a couple of years ago at the onset of the pandemic? This is an inverse of the grade level proficiency from the reading SAS data. Our students in fourth grade and fifth grade at 60% and 51% were in grades one and two at the start of the pandemic. So as a result, their learning gaps, there are learning gaps in solidifying number sense and laying the foundation for division, fractions, multiplication. The SAS assessment is really heavy. If you look at it, it's really heavy in multiplication and fractions. So we continue to address these needs through our WIN model, targeted instruction based on student data. And we are optimistic that, based on the growth we saw during the 22, 23 school year, that we are making significant gains with our WIN model specifically, as well as Tier One instruction and moving another year forward in I-Ready, that we are closing the gaps in these areas for our current students. And that brings us to our last slide, which is science. So again, this is fifth grade only. Third and fourth graders don't take the SAS Science Test or Assessment. And if you add the blue and the green, you're at 56% as a school. This was actually a little bit down from last year, but a little bit above the year prior. And the kind of the rationale, the thought process behind it is we continue to look at ways to strengthen the elementary science curriculum and science experience. You know, the science experience at the elementary level is certainly different than at the secondary, where it's its own content and receives equal instructional minutes from, you know, reading and literacy, which is more heavily weighted at the elementary level. But we are also, in our second year, second full year, we are entering our second full year with a STEAM program, both at Main Street and at Lincoln Street. And the STEAM curriculum, as we continue to develop it, I think will really continue to support the science curriculum and exposure that students are going to get during their elementary years, again, starting in kindergarten and continuing all the way through fifth grade. Happy to try to answer any questions that anybody may have.
I'm full of questions, so I'll ask another question. Or maybe a request, because I don't expect that you necessarily have it today. But I think something that would be really interesting to see is just how a particular class has tracked over time. So how was that fifth grade class that you had them at, I don't know, 50-some percent in one area? How did they do when they were fourth graders? How'd they do when they were third graders, et cetera? And are we seeing a higher percentage, that are we seeing gains within the class? Because I still think, I, I heard what you said about some of the other environmental factors with COVID, but I also think sometimes it's just a mix of the kids that are in a particular class. Some are, come more academically prepared as kindergartners and different household backgrounds, et cetera. And they're just at a different starting point. So it's, it's more sort of tracking what the value added and gains are. It'd be just interesting to see.
Yeah, we can pull that data, that wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. Those are always really interesting, and we appreciate you putting that together. I'm sure it's no small feat. Now we're going to move on to committee reports. One that's missing is the safety, safety and security's missing. But that's okay, there's no update. I don't think we really have any. Has anyone attended any meetings yet?
Later this week.
No.
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 Yeah, they're all later this week, so we'll have a better update next meeting on the committees. Then we have under new business proclamation, which you've already, okay. And then, is there any old business? Okay. And we're not going into any public, non-public, good? Patrick, you good? Okay, it is seven, 6:45, and we are calling this meeting to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.